Good evening. We're gonna get started now. I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. My name is Michael Testani. For those of you who don't know, I'm the Superintendent of Schools. To my right is Jeff Peterson. He's the Chair of the Board of Education. I'd like to also acknowledge other members of the Board who are in attendance tonight. Mrs. Carol Guernsey, Mrs. Jennifer Jacobson, and Mr. David Krasnow. So, thank you. It is truly an honor and privilege to stand before you tonight as we celebrate the outstanding achievements of our remarkable students. To our dedicated faculty and staff, proud parents, supportive family members, especially grandparents. I love seeing the grandparents in the audience. Thank you for being here. It's a special occasion. This is kind of the "why," as I always try to refer to during the course of the school year. We get caught up in some of the minutia, but it kind of brings you back to why we do this every day, why we get into the profession of educating children. So, we recognize not just the academic excellence, but also the perseverance, creativity, leadership, and commitment that each one of our award recipients has demonstrated throughout the school year. Your hard work, your curiosity, and your dedication to learning is truly an inspiration to all of us. These awards are a testament to your talent and effort, but also they reflect the incredible support system around you. Again, all the family members that are here are a testament to that. To all the parents, guardians, thank you for your endless encouragement, for fostering a love of learning at home, and for partnering with us with your children's educational journey that goes for all the rides and everything else that go along with these academic and other achievements. To our teachers and staff, your passion, your guidance, your tireless efforts are the foundation of our students' success. You ignite their potential and you help them navigate their pathway. I am immensely proud of each one of you who are being honored here tonight. You represent the very best of the Fairfield Public Schools, and your accomplishments are a great source of pride for our entire community. You are the leaders, the innovators, and the change-makers of tomorrow. We are excited to see all that you will achieve. So let us begin the celebration acknowledging the dedication and brilliance that fills our halls. Congratulations tonight to all our award recipients, and we will begin with the Superintendent Award. This honor is based on community service and service to others, academic prowess and leadership service in the school community. One student was selected from each elementary and middle school, and one student was selected from each house at both of our high schools. So at this time, I'm gonna call up the Principal of Burr Elementary, Mr. Jason Bluestein, to present tonight's Superintendent Award.
I am delighted to honor Burr Superintendent Award winner Logan Casano. Logan is a smart, driven student, someone who excels in all subjects but is especially adept at math. This past year, he demonstrated exceptional leadership in a weekly math enrichment class and led Burr's Math Olympia team with our school's highest score. What really sets Logan apart, and what I really want to highlight, is the kind of person that he is. Quite simply, Logan is a gentle soul, kind, empathetic, honest, fiercely loyal, and full of unwavering integrity. In his own words, "You attract more bees with honey rather than vinegar, and I decided to do the right thing even when no one was watching." That's Logan, and that's something we need more of in the world. Logan perfectly embodies Burr's core values of understanding, respect, and responsibility, and I am so proud to recognize him tonight. Congratulations.
I also want to mention that these recognition awards are also presented annually in conjunction with the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, or CAPS. At this time, we will now call up Principal of Dwight Elementary School, Mimi Maniscalco, to present tonight's award.
In just his first year at Timothy Dwight Elementary School, Santi Gutierrez-Gasparr has made a remarkable impact on the school community. Born in Spain and having lived in Oregon before coming to Fairfield, Santi brings a global perspective, natural leadership, and a deep sense of empathy to everything he does. He's not just academically talented. He plays the cello in and outside of school, and has for five years. He just started taking piano lessons as well and can play many other instruments easily. He plays soccer and basketball, enjoys tennis, and if you ever get to hear his British accent, you'd be impressed. He serves on the Student Council at Dwight. He cares about his community and devotes his time to find ways to help others. Known for his responsibility, kindness, and ability to lift others up, Santi is a trusted and valued member of Dwight. We are proud to have Santi Gutierrez-Gasparr represent our Dwight community as this year's recipient of the Superintendent's Award.
Okay, at this time, we'll call up Principal of Holland Hill Elementary School, Mrs. Molly Farrell.
Nicholas De Souza is the Holland Hill Class of 2025 Superintendent's Recognition Award winner. Nikki is an exemplary student who has been a valuable member of Holland Hill for six years. He is well-known throughout the Holland Hill community for his admirable work ethic, respectful behavior, and contagious smile. The compassion and empathy he displays for others is admirable. Nikki is a member of our Student Council, our Safety Patrol, the School Band, Cub Scout PAC-89, and Odyssey of the Mine team. Nikki's kindness and leadership are commendable, and his desire to help is truly outstanding. He has been a consistent participant in community service and fundraising activities in his time at Holland Hill. While maintaining his grades and contributing greatly to the school community, Nikki somehow also finds the time to play football, soccer, and basketball. Nikki, we are so proud of you, and we know that you will continue to do great things.
Okay, this time, I'd like to call up Principal of Jennings Elementary School, Mr. Tony Voila.
I said, "Why did he lower it?" I wonder why. So we are so proud to have Margot represent Jennings School. Margot is a talented student, intuitive problem solver, and a kind compassionate friend to all. Margot has consistently demonstrated excellent academic performance, has a strong work ethic, and intellectual curiosity. She is always willing to lend a helping hand and often goes out of her way to ensure that others feel included and supported, fostering a positive environment in our school community. And she's done all this in her first year here. She's a leader, serving as a member of our school's Safety Patrol. Margot has also made a significant impact not only at Jennings but in the larger community of Fairfield. She's been an active advocate in improving accessibility at our playground and for students with disabilities. She has worked to raise awareness for this important initiative, attending and speaking at Facility Committee meetings, Board of Finance meetings, and you've seen her at Board of Education meetings too. Her passion for inclusivity and accessibility is, in recreational spaces, showcases her commitment to make a difference. Her humility is equally admirable, as she never asks and seeks recognition for her contributions. Congratulations, Margot, on this well-deserved recognition. You will do great things in life. We're so proud of you.
This time, I'd like to call up Principal of McKinley Elementary School, Mrs. Christine Booth.
Thank you, Mr. Testani, for the opportunity to recognize McKinley student Emily Tokiyama. Emily demonstrates extracurricular involvement, academic prowess, and leads by example within the McKinley halls. She is a student who always projects excellence. Emily stands out from other students by the graceful way she conducts herself, the high expectations she places on herself, and the dedication she has to her education. She is a notable addition to the Green Team and a critical part of the McKinley School Student Council. She is a hard worker that exudes kindness and compassion to all she encounters. Emily shares her love of music with her classmates by playing violin in McKinley School Orchestra as well as the Townwide Honors Orchestra. Emily is also a competitive dancer at Flashpoint Dance. She is a leader and an invaluable addition to the McKinley family. The McKinley community is proud to have been part of her journey, and congratulations, Emily.
This time, I'll call up Principal of Mill Hill Elementary School, Mrs. Amy Yost.
It is with great pride to announce Parker Pereira as Mill Hill's Superintendent Award this year. Parker is a dedicated student and an active member in her school community. Through Mill Hill SOAR Ambassador Program, she takes on leadership roles in SOAR's community service projects. She spearheaded the Hats for Hope Initiative at Mill Hill in the spring and raised money for the Tommy Fund, a child's cancer support organization. Last summer, she raised over $400 with the lemonade stand, which she also donated to the Tommy Fund. She led the In Class Black History Month Collaborative Poster Project and has led many other classroom efforts as well. Parker is a supportive and friendly classmate with a gentle and encouraging demeanor, who helps her fellow students to apply strategies and succeed. In addition to her volunteer activities, she plays the violinist in the school orchestra and competes on a local dance team. Congratulations, Parker. We're so proud of you.
Okay, next up, North Stratfield Elementary School. I'll call up Principal, Mrs. Louisa Wolf.
North Stratfield is honored to recognize Alejandro as a Superintendent 2025. Alejandro shines with excellence. Oh, look at the bigger print. Thank you. Alejandro, North Stratfield Superintendent Award recipient, shines with excellence character. His genuine kindness touches everyone, from classmates to staff to everyone he meets, always prioritizing others and fostering inclusion. Beyond his remarkable heart, Alejandro excels academically, demonstrating unwavering dedication to learning. His commitment extends to his passions, playing violin in the Honors Orchestra, and his enthusiasm on the soccer field. Ask him about his little brother, and his joy is contagious. He's even a beloved figure in the kindergarten wing. An exceptional student and well-rounded leader, Alejandro embodies responsibility, kindness, and determination. As a center midfield for Revolution Soccer and a basketball player, he shows teamwork and perseverance. A talented violinist with professional aspirations, he also creates engaging YouTube videos and holds a black belt in Taekwondo, embracing discipline and respect. A true role model, the younger children in his neighborhood admire his respectful and helpful nature. Alejandro is a delight, and his future in middle school and beyond promises even greater achievements. Congratulations, Alejandro.
This time, I'd like to call up Mr. Sean Smith from Osborne Hill Elementary School.
So I'm honored to acknowledge William Salvatore from Osborne Hill as this year's Superintendent Award winner. William is an outstanding fifth grader who stands out among his peers for his exceptional leadership, kindness, and dedication to learning. He consistently demonstrates a strong work ethic, tackling challenges with perseverance and enthusiasm. As a dedicated scout member, William embodies the values of responsibility, teamwork, and service to others. His positive attitude uplifts those around him, and he is always willing to help classmates and teachers alike. William's curiosity and love of learning make him a role model in the classroom, while his respectful and compassionate nature fosters a welcoming environment. Whether excelling academically or supporting his peers, William's character and determination set him apart. He embodies the qualities of a true leader and is highly deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, William.
At this time, we'll call up Principal of Riverfield Elementary School, Ms. Mary Rose Diamond.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very proud to introduce our winner of the, Riverfield's winner of the Superintendent's Recognition Award, Timothy Keen. Timmy exemplifies Riverfield's core values every day by modeling kindness, respect, responsibility, and exceptional effort in everything he does. He notices when someone is in need and can be counted on to offer assistance to peers and staff alike without having to be asked. Timmy recognizes the importance of belonging and ensures everyone around him feels that feeling of belonging. He's the first to congratulate a classmate on their hard work and invites others to join his group. Timmy is an active contributor to our school community. As a member of the Riverfield Student Council, Timmy holds a leadership role in decision-making and also mentoring younger students. His musical talents led him to being selected as a lead in our recent production of The Sound of Music, and he's a violinist in our orchestra. Timmy also enjoys athletics and plays basketball outside of school. He's an exceptional young man with a bright future in whatever endeavors he chooses to pursue. Congratulations, Timmy.
This time, we'll recognize the winner of this year's Superintendent Award from Roger Sherman Elementary School, and I'd like to call up Mr. Ian Banner, Principal.
Good evening, everyone. I'm joined tonight by Mrs. Nikki Callahan, our AP, and Mrs. Dan Luciano, who is a classroom teacher. And we are here to celebrate Henley Joyce. Henley personifies everything we look for in students. She's friendly, outgoing, and respectful to everyone. She'll greet you with a smile, speak in a warm, welcoming tone, complete with her daily good morning. Her peers know they can rely on her and follow her lead. She's always willing to help, and she's a true leader. Academically, she takes great pride in her work, always going above and beyond. This is evident in the effort she puts into every detail of her work, including her flawless editing and beautiful handwriting. If she's working with a partner or small group, she'll lead by example, modeling proper teamwork and ensuring everyone is included. Outside of the classroom, she has served on three Sherman Committees this year, including Student Council, Library Tech Team, and Morning Announcements. She also loves to play soccer and basketball, dance, and play violin in Honors Orchestra. She volunteers to help others, joining her family in making donations to Al's Angels, Rev Cur's, and others. She's truly a tremendous role model who brightens the day of all those around her. The 2024-25 Sherman School recipient of the Superintendent's Award is Henley Joyce.
At this time, I'd like to call up Liz Magui, Principal of Stratfield School, to present tonight's award for Stratfield Elementary School.
I am absolutely delighted to introduce you Maeve Dwyer, who is Stratfield's Superintendent Award winner for this year. Motivating today's youth can be difficult. This statement could not be farther from the truth for Maeve. Not only is Maeve highly driven, she is also kind and respectful to everyone, always, all qualities of a person anyone would want to be around. Maeve is involved in various activities. She enjoys a competitive game of basketball as well as hitting in the softball field, being a good sport to all teammates and opponents at all times. Stratfield School's Student Council member is another area where Maeve excels. She is a role model to all students. Maeve took part in our invention convention with her Dip and Drive invention, I'm buying it, and was chosen for the state-level competition. She also manages to incorporate a time to play the saxophone during school, all while keeping up with other responsibilities. Somehow, this all seems to come easy to Maeve. Each of these attributes, and certainly many more to speak of, speak to what a true leader and truly good person Maeve is. Congratulations, Maeve. Well deserved.
Okay, on to middle school. This time, I'd like to call up Principal of Fairfield Woods Middle School, Ms. Colleen Bannock.
Chase Coburn has been a standout member of our Woods community for the past three years, showcasing exceptional talent, passion, and leadership. He has taken the initiative to spearhead our broadcast club, demonstrating technical skills and the ability to inspire his peers. As emcee at several concerts and a color commentator for three seasons of Fairfield Woods Basketball Games on our YouTube channel, Chase has enhanced our community's engagement with sports, among other things. His creativity is evident in the news segments that he produces, which are widely shared. Additionally, he runs two personal podcasts in his spare time. Wiz Talk with Chase about the Washington Wizards and Cool Sports Network, where he hosts guests from ESPN and the NFL, promoting his message to inspire others to chase their dreams. Chase is also a freelance writer for the league winners, covering UConn football, and he holds press credentials for Fairfield University Basketball, and he's working on UConn ones. His extensive involvement at such a young age highlights his commitment to sports journalism. Looking ahead, Chase aspires to establish a foundation for those less fortunate and to become a sports reporter or business leader. We are so proud to nominate Chase as our Superintendent Award recipient this year. Congratulations.
We'll all keep in contact with Chase if we want tickets down the road. Next up, Roger Ludlow Middle School, and I will call up the famous Principal, Ms. Meg Tiley. Infamous.
On behalf of Roger Ludlow Middle School, Mrs. Shaughnessy, our Assistant Principal, and Ms. Kate Harder, our School Counselor, we are incredibly proud to honor Lulu Joyce. I do need to do a little sidebar here in that I'd like to know what the Joices serve for dinner, in that Henley just won, Lulu won in fifth grade, and Brother Donovan won at Roger Ludlow when he graduated from Ludlow as well. On to celebrate Lulu. Lulu, Roger Ludlow Middle School has proudly selected Lulu Joyce as the 2025 eighth-grade Superintendent Student Recognition Award recipient. Lulu has a passion and commitment for academic success, community service, and leadership. Lulu is a model student who faces challenges head-on and has a thirst for knowledge. That thirst led her to a passion project investigating student-teacher relationships with partners in the gifted program and courageously presented their findings at one of our faculty meetings. When she's not researching, studying, or leading her premier soccer team, she may be found practicing her cello, assisting her PE teacher with her master's thesis, challenging the dean to an intense game of Clue, or collecting canned goods for Operation Hope. She navigated her middle school years with humility and grace and without owning a cellphone. We are so proud of Lulu and wish her the very best in her future endeavors.
Well, with that, I will call up Tomlinson Middle School Principal, Mr. Anthony Formato, to present tonight's award.
That wasn't nice. It's hard to follow someone famous and tall. Hi, everybody. I'm Anthony Formato, Principal of Tomlinson Middle School. I'm joined by our Assistant Principal, Ms. Jody Sax, and I'm here to celebrate Arav Saru, who is recognized as a standout student whose curiosity, leadership, and drive have had an enduring impact on Tomlinson Middle School. For three years, Arav has been a constant presence in student leadership and a frequent voice of our daily announcements. He embraces every opportunity to learn and grow. Whether he's tutoring his peers, competing in a state-level Civics B and National History Day, or leading an event for our Student Council, Arav is always dedicated and enthusiastic. Arav balances his academics with a wide range of interests and talents. He's an athlete. He's competing in tennis in the 100-meter track event. He's a strategic thinker in chess. He's a passionate leader in the school drama production, where he took on the role of Assistant Director. He's also a French horn player qualifying for the regionals. He's also a guest conductor. Whether leading or competing, Arav approaches every challenge with intention, thoughtfulness, and heart. Congratulations, Arav.
Okay, on to high school. At this time, I'd like to call up Dr. Karen Baldwin, who will present tonight's awards to Fairfield High School Walter Fitzgerald Campus Award winners.
Good evening. I'm joined here tonight by faculty members Tricia Pitko, a science teacher, and Laura Shaughnessy, English teacher. I'm so pleased to present this evening's award winner, Roman McGarvey. Roman is a quiet student leader who leaves a powerful and lasting impact on both the classroom and the school. He leads through his actions, showing up consistently, treating others with respect, and doing the right thing even when no one was watching. His steady and supportive presence sets a tone of calmness, maturity, and integrity that others naturally follow and feel safe to be themselves. When not at school, Roman can be found playing the steel drums and percussion with the Jim Royal Drum Studios A Team. He has been into music since he was young. He states that he is driven by two big things: helping others and finding peace of mind. After graduation, Roman is heading to Santa Fe to work with his uncle on metal sculptures and help care for his cousin who has cerebral palsy, while he ponders what his next adventure will be and what career he will choose. while he ponders what his next adventure will be and what career he will choose. Walter Fitzgerald Campus is a better place because of Roman, and we wish him well as he makes his mark on the world.
At this time, I will call up Fairfield Ludlow High School Principal, Dr. Greg Hatzis, to present tonight's three award winners from Fairfield Ludlow High School.
Thank you, Mr. Testany and Mr. Peterson. To announce Ludlow's winner for Warner House, who is John Emra, we welcome House Principal Sean Collie.
Evening. It is my honor to present the Superintendent's Award to Jack Emra, a student who truly embodies our school's Falcons' values. As a leader of our three-time state finalist mock trial team and Model UN Club, Jack has demonstrated exceptional dedication, leadership, and scholarship. Jack's engagement in multiple AP Social Studies courses alongside leadership in mock trial and Model UN reignited his passion for civics and a deeper commitment to the community. Through rigorous class discussions and in-depth studies, Jack has developed a profound understanding of political systems and civic responsibilities. Jack turned this passion into civic action via his work with the DTC on redevelopment projects, showcasing his dedication to making a positive impact on the community. Jack is excited to continue his journey at Boston College, looking forward to traditions like the Beanpot Hockey Tournament and Mile Twenty-One of the Boston Marathon, and is eager for increased research opportunities in economics and finance. Congratulations, Jack.
The Superintendent Award winner from Webster House is Samitha Kunichetti. And here to introduce her is Webster House Principal, Dr. Greg Pugliese.
Thank you. The recipient of the Superintendent's recognition from Webster House is Samitha Kunichetti. Samitha is a stellar student, ambitious, highly motivated, and exceptionally talented. She has pursued the most rigorous academic path at Ludlow, taking 12 AP courses while balancing a demanding schedule of extracurriculars and volunteer work. Passionate about math, science, and engineering, Samitha has been an integral member of the math team, and through her courses and work with the Connecticut Science and Engineering Fair, has deepened her expertise in areas such as coding, artificial intelligence, aerodynamics, and sustainable energy. Outside the classroom, she has served on the Library Teen Council and has received the President's Volunteer Service Award from Fairfield Public Library. She's a Ludlow leader, has served on the Falcon Council at FLHS, and statewide on the Executive Board of the Connecticut Association of Student Councils. Samitha is also an incredibly gifted artist. Musically, she plays cello and sings with the Fairfield County Children's Choir. A talented writer, she especially enjoys writing poetry and has received multiple awards for her work, including the Silver Award for Poetry from Connecticut Student Writers Magazine. This fall, Samitha will attend the University of Pennsylvania, where she is destined for great success. Congratulations, Samitha.
Superintendent Award winner from Wright House tonight is Victoria Benison. And here to introduce her is Wright House Principal Barry Raven.
Victoria means victory, and this award is for a student who has marked myriad victories while attending Fairfield Public Schools. Her victories span academics and music, but it is also about her character and service to our community. Victoria is a nationally accredited singer and violinist who has performed at Carnegie Hall and Fenway Park. Last year, she created a program and trained peers to perform about the Harlem Renaissance, which enraptured students and staff. She has been successful in 10 AP classes and the highest levels of math and music courses, while also being the co-director for our a cappella group and leading a children's choir for her church. Her school counselor shared with me that she lives by her grandfather's motto, which is "to be happy is to make other people happy." Victoria has made so many people happy at Fairfield Ludlow High School and will touch so many lives as she pursues a career in medicine, starting at Northeastern University. But first, one final victory, our FLHS valedictorian of the class of 2025.
At this time, I'd like to call up Fairfield Ward High School Principal, Mr. Paul Cavanna, to present tonight's awards for Fairfield Ward students.
Good evening. I'd like to have Mr. Brown, Director of Student Services, as well as Ariane Shepherd, and Kelly Cummings, School Counselor, and Kurt Simonson, Fitz House Principal, to join us, join me on stage. Mr. Brown, can we just switch places? I want to go right here if you don't mind. Thank you. Ariane Shepherd is a driven, compassionate student whose academic achievement, leadership, and service make her an Superintendent's Award. Aspiring to become a surgeon, she has pursued rigorous academic path, complemented by hands-on healthcare experience and a deep commitment to serving others. Her selection to the prestigious Human Oncology Program at Memorial Sloan-Kennering Hospital reflects both her intellect and dedication. There, she contributed to breast cancer research, mastered advanced laboratory techniques, and presented professionally her findings. As president of the French National Honor Society and Chemistry Club, an active member in the Math National Honor Society and Key Club, she exemplifies intellectual curiosity and initiative. She has received numerous academic awards, including AP Scholar with Distinction, the Daughter of the American Revolution's Award, and the Harvard Book Award. Dr. Faver shares she is an exemplary student and person. She is intellectually curious, values learning and growth, and engages with others in incredible thoughtful and affirming way. She is a humble, generous, and a person of great integrity. In an age where shortcomings are common, she always challenges herself and lifts up others. This fall, Ariane will be attending Brown University. Please join me in congratulating her as a Superintendent Award winner from Fitz House. Next, I'd like to have Ms. Katie Lynn, who is the Pequot House Principal, as well as Jayree. Come join Mr. Brown and myself on stage. Jayree Ingram embodies the core values of academic excellence, leadership, and service. Throughout his time here at Ward, he has distinguished himself as a leader, serving as class president, house vice president, student forum leader, and student representative to the Fairfield Board of Education. In every role, he is a passionate advocate for student voice. His dedication to the school community is unparalleled. Whether it's mentoring incoming ninth-grade students or using his own resources to attend and make school events better, Jayree consistently shows up as a visible supportive presence. He is kind, tenacious, funny, and spirited. A student who brings people together and uplifts others. As president, he found his voice governing the student body, championing his premieres, and promoting school pride. Ward is a better place because of him. This fall, Jayree will be attending Morehouse College. Please join me in congratulating him as the Pequot House Superintendent Award winner. I'd like to have Michael Ivanoff, as well as Mr. Fekety and his parents, come join me on stage. It is a pleasure to recognize Michael for his outstanding achievements and exceptional character. Throughout his academic career, Michael has exemplified excellence in every sense, demonstrating strong work ethic, leadership, and a deep commitment to serving others. His rigorous schedule includes advanced placement courses, highlighting his curiosity and determination. A varsity swim captain and our CIAC Scholar/Student-Athlete, he promotes teamwork and leadership inside and outside of the Ward community. Michael's dedication to his community is equally inspiring. He volunteers for organizations such as Operation of Hope and the Bulgarian Community Center, consistently showing up to support others. Michael's math teacher, Peter Shinazoo, shares Michael has a love, and especially within math, swimming and science. Academically, he has innate ability to grasp complex concepts extremely quickly with a fluency that allows him to stand above his classmates. Michael also has a love of jokes and witticism that makes class truly enjoyable to teach. He is a wonderful student person who embodies the Ward acronym and he is an amazing Ward ambassador. This fall, Michael will be attending Johns Hopkins University. Please join me in congratulating him as a talented Superintendent Award winner.
Okay, we're going to move on now to the Cabe Award winners. Connecticut Association of Boards of Education would like to recognize tonight's award winners. The Cabe Student Leadership Award recognizes two students from each middle and high school who exhibit exemplary leadership skills and also meet the following criteria: willingness to take on challenges, capability to make difficult decisions, concern for others, diplomacy, a willingness to commit to a project, the ability to understand issues clearly, the ability to honor a commitment. Let's begin with Fairfield Woods Middle. I'll call up Ms. Colleen Bannock again.
We will begin with Will LePlante. I am pleased to congratulate Will as a Cabe Award winner this year. He is a remarkable young man actively involved in our chamber orchestra and provides invaluable technology assistance to his classmates, showcasing his willingness to help others. Will's enthusiasm for engineering and robotics shines through in his engagement with incredibly complex projects. One of his notable accomplishments is creating an ultrasonic distance meter, reflecting his keen interest in C++ programming. This summer, he looks forward to possibly serving as a camp counselor at Wakeman Boys and Girls Club. Additionally, he demonstrates leadership as a referee for local soccer games, effectively managing teams and promoting sportsmanship. Will aspires to create something impactful in the field of engineering in the future. His academic achievements, leadership skills, and commitment to helping others make him a standout candidate for this award. Please join me in congratulating Will LePlante from Woods. Morgan Hine is our second Cabe Award winner from Woods. Morgan is an outstanding choice for the Cabe Award. At Fairfield Woods, she excels in language arts, art, and math with a particular passion for LA that showcases her understanding of narrative structure and character development. His talent aligns with her aspiration to one day becoming a professional author. Morgan is also an active member of our school community, playing the clarinet in the school band and demonstrating her commitment to musical excellence. As a dedicated athlete, she participates on a travel softball team and excels in swimming, particularly in stroke and freestyle. As an avid reader, Morgan immerses herself in various genres, enhancing her writing skills and broadening her perspectives. In her spare time, she is learning to play the guitar, showcasing her eagerness to explore new creative outlets. Morgan's academic abilities, artistic talents, athletic achievements, and personal qualities make her an exceptional candidate for this award. Please join me in congratulating Morgan on this honor.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to call back up the infamous Meg Tiley.
Roger Ludlow Middle School is honored to present Natalia Marcela Casarubias Del Rosa with the Cabe Leadership Award. Natalia and her family moved to the US from Mexico when she was seven years old and did not speak English. She excelled in math early and quickly acquired English fluency. By the time she arrived at middle school, she was a straight A student and qualified for our Gifted Program. She is also active in her church and is looking forward to receiving confirmation this year. When not studying or spending time with her loving family, Natalia enjoys playing the clarinet and displaying her artistic talents at exhibits and competition. She is eager to begin high school and earn her seal of billy literacy as well as dive into rigorous coursework. She is a leader in the classroom and enriches our school climate. RLMs will miss Natalia's positivity and bright smile and know she will have great success in high school. Congratulations. Roger Ludlow Middle School is also honored to present Anya Sharma with the Cabe Leadership Award. Anya excels in her classes and is well-respected by her peers and teachers. That respect was amplified during a passion project she co-facilitated with her Gifted Workshop peers, where she presented feedback to the RLMs staff on student-teacher relationships. She bravely highlighted areas of strength as well as areas of growth. Anya is also a talented singer and musician in our chamber choir and orchestra, as well as the Fairfield County Children's Choir, with whom she performed at the prestigious Carnegie Hall this spring. In the community, you may see Anya and her mother volunteering through the National Charity League, and she is well on her way to earning a Presidential Award from the organization. Anya is a strong tennis player, and she is looking forward to competing in high school. Anya is a valuable member of our school community and will be missed as she heads on to high school. Congratulations, Anya.
Okay, Mr. Formato, you're up next.
Sophie Denniston is a dedicated and multi-talented student whose passion, perseverance, and generosity set her apart. Sophie is a diligent worker and an active participant in the classroom. She brings curiosity and enthusiasm to every class. Outside of school, she's an accomplished dancer who practices ballet and contemporary dance four times a week. She performed in The Nutcracker and even wrote an article about her experience as Clara. Beyond the stage, her talents extend to music as a member of the Honors Orchestra and to writing, earning first place in the Women's History Month Essay Competition. Sophie has dedicated over 200 hours to volunteering at an animal shelter in Fairfield and is deeply concerned with issues like animal testing. Whether through her artistry, her scholarship, or her service, Sophie consistently strives for excellence while making a meaningful impact on the world around her. Congratulations, Sophie Denniston.
Tomlinson Middle School is proud to present Anika Thacker with this award. She has demonstrated a willingness to take on challenges. She's responsible and caring and honors her commitments. She's passionate for academics. Anika has earned Student of the Month awards and virtually flawless grades and impressive respect from her community. Annika has earned Student of the Month awards and virtually flawless grades and impressive respect from her community. Musically talented, she plays violin in the eighth-grade orchestra, chamber orchestra, and honors orchestra. Outside of school, Annika is a competitive swimmer and was selected for the Western Regional - pardon me - Western Regional Music Festival Orchestra. In her free time, she works regularly with local charities. She even worked with the Connecticut Special Olympics, supporting participants on the swim team while cheering the racers on. We are honored to present her with the Cabe Award as recognition of our overwhelming pride in who she has become. We wish Annika the best of luck in her future endeavors.
I'd like to call Dr. Hatzis back up to the microphone.
Thank you so much. I have the large print version for you. We're so proud to announce the winners of the Cabe Award for Fairfield Ludlow High School, starting first with Julia Walters. Julia displays leadership skills and talents through so many avenues, including being a Ludlow leader, captain of the track team, including being named All FCAC First Team in Polvolt, AP Scholar with Distinction, member of the Science National Honor Society, and French Achievement Award winner. She has earned a 4.6 GPA while taking 10 AP courses with interest in both STEM and the humanities. Julia felt called to action after seeing the impact of the October 7, 2023 massacre. She was inspired to create a Jewish culture club, bringing students together with a common bond and helping organize the FLHS Day of Peace, which strove to foster an environment of respect, compassion, and acceptance, all while raising $4,000 for humanitarian aid to the region. Her activism led to serving on the Fairfield Holocaust Committee as the first teen member, as well as being a featured student speaker at the community gathering to combat discrimination. Julia will be attending the University of Pennsylvania in the fall. Next, we have Sabrina Tome Gonzalez. No one embodies active citizenship more than Sabrina. In school, she has been star witness and captain of our three-time state runner-up mock trial team, taken home multiple honors as a delegate on our Model UN team, and served as editor-in-chief and copy editor of our yearbook, and was also the opinions editor of our online student news site, The Prospect. Her journalistic talents were recognized after a summer fellowship at a PBS Student Report Lab when her mini-documentary project was featured on the PBS NewsHour. Outside of school, she was one of three students chosen as an intern for Congressman Jim Heims and served as chair of all interns on the DTC. In school, she has a 4.5 GPA, all while taking nine AP courses. It's hard to believe that Sabrina moved to Fairfield from South America for only her freshman year. Next year, Sabrina will attend Emory University on a full scholarship. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call Mr. Cavanna back up to present the awards. Just want to say, this awards night is an annual reminder to me of how much of a slacker I am. I don't know about you, these children are absolutely amazing.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome Alexandra Mantel, as well as Director of Student Services, Mr. Brown, and Townsend House Principal, Mr. Fekety. I am pleased to congratulate Alexandra for this well-deserved recognition. A dedicated leader, Alex is known for her integrity, kindness, and commitment to others. She meets challenges confidently, handles situations with diplomacy, and navigates complex decisions easily. A key part of Alex's high school experience is her role in BBYO as Vice President of Jewish Programming, where she plans meaningful events for her peers. At Ward, she also stands out as a Mustang mentor, welcoming and supporting new students to our school community. Academically, Alex has embraced challenging coursework and pushed herself beyond her comfort zone. Her resilience, curiosity, and compassion set her apart from most students. She is dedicated and a supportive leader. Ms. Moyer notes, simply put, Alex is the kind of student teachers dream of: inquisitive, compassionate, and a true leader. She embodies the values of Fairfield Ward High School, modeling them through her actions, words, and interactions with others. Alex takes initiative, ensures that everyone feels welcome, and motivates those around her. It's hard to walk away from a conversation with her without a smile on your face. She is truly deserving of this recognition. This fall, Alexandra will be attending Elon University. Please join me in congratulating her as the Townsend House Cabe Award recipient. Congratulations. At this time, if Amog, as well as Ms. Cummings, Fitz House School Counselor and Fitz House Principal, Mr. Simonsen, join me on stage. A recipient of the prestigious 2025 Coca-Cola Scholarship and current finalist for a 2025 US Presidential Program, Amog's accomplishments are a testament to his dedication. A brilliant, self-driven student, Amog excels across academics, leadership, and entrepreneurship. As the founder and president of the Ed Hacks, a nonprofit organization, he raised over $174,000 and 26 corporate sponsors and attracted more than 1,200 participants to his event. His leadership has not only propelled this organization, but has also succeeded in providing memberships and internships to students and his peers. Amog pursues the most rigorous coursework, including 12 AP classes, independent studies, and secured an internship at the Reach Capital in California. His passion for the use of technology to advance education in society is both inspiring and impactful. Mr. Donlin shared, "I often jokingly called Amog the mayor of Ward, not just because he is always in the halls, but because of his genuine connectiveness with everyone. He could connect with quiet freshmen to stressed-out seniors and staff. Amog has a gift of making people feel seen and valued. His ability to create a sense of belonging through simple, kind interaction truly embodies the Ward acronym." This fall, Amog will be attending Harvard University. Please join me in congratulating him as the Fitz House and this year's Cabe Award recipient.
Okay, before we conclude tonight, please join me in a big round of applause for Meg Brown, the Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent for organizing tonight's event. Meg? And I'd just like to say in closing, when we hear so much about what's wrong with the world, think about tonight. Tonight is a testament and a reminder of all the great things that are right in this world. So thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for all your support of our students, and good night.